Good evening. I want to bring this regular meeting, the Clearlake City Council, to order at 6:00 P.M. Madam clerk, we have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Overton.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sluton.
Here.
And Mayor Kramer.
Here.
And Councilmember Perdak is absent.
Stand for the pledged allegiance. Number Harris, would you lead us? I will.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To remain standing for the invocation, Todd, Mr. Anfield, are you here?
Yes.
Dear Heavenly Father, we just ask that you would bless this meeting tonight and you would give all of us wisdom, Lord, that we could make wise decisions for you. We ask, Lord God, all these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Anfield. Okay, this is word reminder, all items on the agenda, public comments before final actions taken, citizens wishing to introduce written material into record at the public meeting, any item or request to provide a copy of the written material to the city prior to the main date. Have you received any of that? Okay, speakers must restrict their comments to items as appears on the agenda and stay within a three-minute time limit. If there are a lot of people wanting to speak, I reserve the right of limiting that time even further. Adoption of the agenda, Mr. Board Manager.
We have one item, item number three, due to a scheduling conflict, we'd like to pull that item, reschedule it for another meeting.
All right. Okay. Item number three will be pulled. Public, have any comments on the agenda? Seeing none, council?
Mr. Mayor, would you make a motion to accept the agenda on item three?
Second. Motion has been made by Councilmember Harris and seconded by Vice Mayor Sluton. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Announcement of action from closed session, Mr. Fuji, can you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Direction would be quiet at the south.
Okay. We shall move on to presentation of animal controls of November's adoptable dogs. And I see an adoptable dog back in the back of the room. It's Weldon. Bring him on in.
This month, we have Bernard. He's a, probably a boxer, maybe even Saint Bernard, football mix.
Clearly not too friendly now. Or was loving for a sight.
I think so. But he's very social, dog-friendly, likes cats and chickens. Funny story.
Likes them or likes to eat them?
Likes them.
Give us, Charmaine, the mic. Sorry.
So funny story, well, not that one, but we actually got him as a strand last December. That's why we named him Bernard, because that's Santa's head elf. And he was adopted out, I believe, in February, and they brought him back in July because they didn't have time for him. Relatives had a couple female bonded dogs that didn't like him. There were some swabbles and such, so. He's back with us, he's had some interest, but nothing solid, but he's a good dog. Likes exercise. Don't worry, he's enough.
So if somebody was interested in adopting this dog, who would they call?
They would call the shelter.
What's the number there?
Which is two seven three nine four four zero. Or six eight twenty open five three, or open Tuesday through Saturday, noon to four, or by appointment. And he's about three, up to date on his vaccines and neutered. Ready to go for Christmas.
Good-looking dog.
All righty, thank you.
You know him?
Lieutenant Dogs.
Good evening, members of the council. A quick update on the animal control stats through today. So far this year, we've taken four hundred and four dogs in the shelter, one hundred eighty-seven, or forty-six percent of them have gone to rescue, ninety have been returned to owner, fifty-one have been adopted, forty-seven have been euthanized. So our live release rate has gone down a little bit since last month, but we're still doing good at eighty-eight percent.
Thank you, Lieutenant Dogs. All right, now we're getting into presentations. First one will be certificates of appreciation to City Halloween contributors. Do we have any, anyone here that might be representing any of those contributors? Who we are?
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Maybe before you do that, Administrative Services Director Swanson has put together a few slides. I think she would like to.
Go for it.
As you know, every year, we have our City Halloween on Halloween, and if you go to the next slide, this was our eleventh annual event since 2006. The City Halloween is one hundred percent donation-funded and a volunteer event, which makes it very special because that means that all of the candy that we give out is donated by local community members, and the time that's spent out there giving Halloween candy to the kids is done by volunteers. This year, because of the public safety power shut-offs, we weren't sure if we would have electricity that day. Fortunately, it's not we here at City Hall, because we always had it, but out in the community, if everyone would have their power. So we decided to extend the hours in case everyone didn't have power because we wanted to make sure that everybody got some trick-or-treating time in before dark if there wasn't going to be electricity out in the community. So we extended the hours to one to five. This year, we had a new record. We had been out over four hundred trick-or-treat bags, and they were all stuffed full. We had probably six hundred people in our lobby between one and five. We eventually enforced a run out of candy, but that also includes twenty-five pizzas donated by Cecil's Pizza, twenty-five large pizzas with about sixteen pieces each. That was an amazing amount. So I have some event volunteers and donators who we need to thank tonight. Cecil's Pizza, Foods, etc., Grocery Outlet, Clearlake Automotive, A&amp;B Collision, the Clearlake Police Officers Association gave us a very generous donation for candy this year. Vicki and Chuck Leonard, Karen and Dale Valentine, Joanne Cox, Joan Moore, Kathleen Stewart, Sheila Budwell, Cheryl Allman, and lots of, practically everybody on city staff gives out at least a bag of candy for them. So we do have some pictures from that day. We can just go through. That is everyone getting ready. We stuffed the bags the day before, and we pile all of the candy onto this large table that you can see here in front of us, and it just takes over the entire table, and so that's where we stuffed bags. Yeah. We had a lot of people coming in and out. It was really an amazing day, so. And this year, we had Trump or Treat in Austin Park right afterward, and that was a huge success as well. We have certificates for everyone who is here.
I think there's a couple of them I know. Letters should come up.
If you're here, they should come up.
Absolutely. And want to make sure you get. Actually, Councilman Harris.
Anything you need.
He's our official hand or outer. Are you coming up too, Mr. Leonard?
Yeah.
Your name happened to be on there.
I know you're not used to that.
Okay. These certificates are all pretty well, pretty much similar in, so I'll read this. I'll read the presentation. One, first one, for food, etc., certificate of appreciation, food, etc. Presented in grateful recognition of supporting City Halloween. The City Council of the City of Clearlake extends a thank you in honor of your generosity to our community, dated this fourteenth day of November 2019, signed by myself, Mayor Perdak.
Cecil's Pizza.
This same certificate written to the Senator Cecil Pizza in recognition of your supporting our City Halloween. And City Council, City of Clearlake, extends a thank you in honor of your generosity to our community, again dated this fourteenth day of November 2019. Sorry about that a little bit. Signed by myself, Mayor Perdak.
Thank you.
I'm Joan Moore.
Joan Moore. Joan, you're not supposed to be here.
I know, but I'm.
According to your sister.
I wasn't going to come, but if you're going to talk about the roads, I'm coming.
All righty, I'm good. Continue, I just saw it. Okay, certificate of appreciation, Joan Moore. Presented in grateful recognition of supporting City Halloween. The City Council, City of Clearlake, extends a thank you in honor of your generosity to our community, dated this fourteenth day of November 2019, signed by myself, Mayor Perdak.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your support. Yeah. Certificate of appreciation, Vicki and Chuck Leonard. Presented in grateful recognition of supporting City Halloween, Halloween. The City Council of the City of Clearlake extends a thank you in honor of your generosity to our community, dated this fourteenth day of November 2019, signed by myself as Mayor Perdak. Same thing, Mr. Leonard, and Mayor Leonard. He was. Okay, and.
I'm sure Melissa may.
Next year, put those out better, please. Actually.
Yeah, we need to stand in line if you have.
Actually, I was going to have Melissa present this, and she refused to let me do that. But I am going to read the note that's at the bottom of it. Certificate of appreciation, Joanne Cox. Presented in grateful recognition of supporting Halloween. City Council of the City of Clearlake extends a thank you in honor of your generosity to our community, dated this fourteenth day of November 2019, signed by myself as Mayor of Clearlake. Got a little extra note, I love you, Mom. Thank you so much. And Cheryl? Okay. Certificate of appreciation, Cheryl Allman. Presented in grateful recognition of supporting City Halloween. The City Council of the City of Clearlake extends a thank you in honor of your generosity to our community, dated this fourteenth day of November 2019, and signed by myself as Mayor of Clearlake.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cheryl. Okay, there are others that aren't here. Sheila Budwell, her names are up there, Sheila Budwell. Kathleen Stewart. Karen and Dale Valentine. Clearlake Police Officers Association, we don't have any representation of CTO here? Okay. So, City Certificate of Appreciation, the Clearlake Police Officers Association, presented in grateful recognition of supporting City Halloween. The City Council of the City of Clearlake extends a thank you in honor of your generosity to our community, dated this fourteenth day of November 2019, and signed by myself as Mayor of Clearlake. All of what you do. Grocery Outlet, the other one, Clearlake Automotive, A&amp;B Collision, I think I named the others. We will give these certificates to them, so thank you all. Okay. I should have just asked Vicki to keep standing. Next one, our presentation of certificates of appreciation to our city volunteers. Would you all please step forward? I think so. Vicki? You there? Did Vicki skip out on us here? Vicki, you're not done yet. I'm going to start with yours because I have something written on it. Vicki, I think this is just, this is information on Vicki Leonard and her volunteering at City Hall. Vicki has been on here for City Hall for thirteen years. She organizes our office and maintains our records and manages our record management system. She works on special products, projects, and can be found decorating City Hall for all the holidays, so you're going to be busy. But Vicki is the foundation of our operation, volunteering her health in many different community events for many years, including playing Mrs. Santa in the Christmas parade, and will be doing that again this year alongside Chuck.
No, actually, we gave that up a couple of years ago with Denise and Pete.
No, okay. The Santa, so he's not doing that now. All right, and helping with the animal worm races at the end of the President's Day celebration, the parade and celebration. There is no one who exemplifies community service more than Vicki Leonard. She's very appreciative of all of us. Now I'm going to read the certificate, which, of course, it will be the same for each of you. Certificate of appreciation, Vicki Leonard, City Hall volunteer. Presented in grateful recognition of supporting our community. The City Hall of the City of Clearlake extends a thank you in honor of your commitment to our city, dated this fourteenth day of November 2019, and signed by myself as Mayor of Clearlake. I'll go ahead and present this to you. Thank you very much. I'm just going to go down, go through these in order that I've got, and Richard Moore. Richard here. Ross Bartow. There you go. Lots. Saying the certificate of appreciation for your service, Ross. Volunteer in policing. Presented in grateful recognition of supporting our community. City Council of the City of Clearlake extends a thank you in honor of your commitment to our city, dated this fourteenth day of November 2019, and signed by myself as Mayor of Clearlake. Thank you again. North E. Turner. Not here. And Jim Hopkins is right here. Jim, this is for volunteering policing, which is obvious because you've got your uniform on. Presented in grateful recognition of supporting our community. The City Council of the City of Clearlake extends a thank you in honor of your commitment to our city, dated this fourteenth day of November 2019, and signed by myself as Mayor of Clearlake. Mike, not here? And Marie?
It's me.
I knew that. Right there on your.
Does say that, doesn't it?
It does, yeah. This certificate of appreciation, Marie Weathers. Volunteer in policing. Presented in grateful recognition of supporting our community. The City Council of the City of Clearlake extends a thank you in honor of your commitment to our city, dated this fourteenth day of November 2019, and signed by me, Mayor Perdak.
Thank you, and thank you for your service also.
Well, thank you very much. You've been doing a lot longer than I thought, though, I know that. Marina Barnes.
No, she's not here.
And Buddy, I know she's here. Buddy Carter. Certificate of appreciation to you for volunteering policing. Presented in grateful recognition of supporting our community. The City Council of the City of Clearlake extends a thank you in honor of your commitment to our city, dated this fourteenth day of November 2019, and signed by myself as Mayor of Clearlake. You're welcome. Buddy and I have known each other a long time. Lou Ward.
She's not here.
All right. And I don't see Marty here. Marty Foltz. Linda Perroll.
She's here.
She's happy.
Good. Certificate of appreciation, Linda Perroll. For your volunteer policing work, presented in grateful recognition of supporting our community, the City Council of the City of Clearlake extends a thank you in honor of your commitment to our city, dated this fourteenth day of November 2019, and signed by myself as Mayor of Clearlake. Thank you for your service.
Thank you for yours.
Roger. Roger Stute. Used to be, used to be our police chief. Correct. Certificate of appreciation, Roger, for volunteering policing, presented in grateful recognition of supporting our community. City Council of the City of Clearlake extends a thank you in honor of your commitment to our, your continuing commitment to our city, dated this, this tenth, fourteenth day of November 2019, and signed by myself as Mayor. Thank you very much. You're welcome, sir. Thank you very much. Jevanol Simono? Okay. Give that to him. Gary. Certificate of appreciation for Gary Foot, volunteering policing. Presented in grateful recognition of supporting our community. The City Council of the City of Clearlake extends a thank you in honor of your commitment to our city, dated this fourteenth day of November 2019, and signed by myself as Mayor of Clearlake.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much for your service. Okay, it looks like everybody's got one, so that means that none of the rest of these folks are here. Robert Hanson.
Not here.
He's not here. Johnny Bird. Is not here. Is your old volunteer in policing. Frederick Gale. Oh, yours! Last one, I'm sorry. So he's the one who takes our photos. Certificate of appreciation, Frederick.
Picture, picture never gets a picture taken.
Yeah, right. Frederick, for volunteer in policing, presented in grateful recognition of supporting our community. City Council of the City of Clearlake extends a thank you in honor of your commitment to our city, dated this fourteenth day of November 2019, and signed by myself as Mayor of Clearlake.
Thank you, sir.
Very much for your service. Linda.
Thank you.
Linda Rickle?
She's here.
Here? Chaplin Elizabeth Kelly is not here. And Chaplin Gervin Gittera, I know is not here. Robert Redd is here. Robert. And Johnny. Again, thank you so much, all of you, for your service to the City of Clearlake and your continued service. I know that I always see you out there helping to direct traffic when there's traffic accidents or when there's parades, or just being around and showing the colors. So we so much appreciate your service to our city. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to public comment. This is the time for any member of the public to address the city council on any matter not on the agenda, that is, within the subject jurisdiction, of the subject matter jurisdiction in the city. I don't see any speaker information cards here, so I don't know if anybody might want to speak. A few Brown Act with certain limitations, but not allowed to counsel or staff discuss issues brought forth under public comment. So if you do come up, please don't be offended if we don't answer your questions if you direct them to us. We cannot take action on non-agenda items. Concerns may be referred to staff replaced on the next available agenda if necessary. Please note, the comments from the public will also be taken on each agenda item. Comments shall be limited to three minutes each. Are there any public comments, having said all of that? I probably should have asked first. Nothing from you, Supervisor Stalachie? Okay, we shall move on then to the consent agenda. All items listed in the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be approved by one motion. There is no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the council or audience requests otherwise, or the staff has requested change in their adoption of the agenda, in which case item will be removed for separate consideration. Any items so removed will be taken up following the motion to approve the consent agenda. So. Are there any changes, Mr. Board Manager, to the consent agenda? No, sir. In the public, do you wish to have anything pulled from the consent agenda? Council? All right, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Have a motion made by Councilman Harris and seconded by Councilman Overton. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. I have to be recused for the next item since we own property next to the location of this next item on the agenda. I have to be recused for the next item since we own property next to the location of this next item on the agenda.
Okay.
Mayor, I think Chief White wants to make comment.
All right. Chief White, just.
Mr. Mayor, our volunteers are very respectful, and I would like to allow them just a brief minute to escape out of here because we ask a lot of them, and we asked them extra to be here tonight. So give them just a quick second to leave if they want to, or they can stay.
Okay, and if you do leave, again, thank you so much. Thank you all. Or even if you stay, thank you so much.
A very respectful group.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
Alrighty. And item twelve. Consideration of first reading, ordinance number two thirty-four dash two nineteen, twenty nineteen, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Clearlake approving development agreement DA two thousand and nineteen dash oh one with DNM Compassion Center LLC slash Jason Jones. Mr. Assistant Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So. Action before you is consideration of development agreement between the city and Jason Jones and the compassionate center LLC. So, just to give a little bit of background. With all of the permitted commercial cannabis related businesses, the city adopted a number of codes that required those businesses to go through use permit process and for the use permit to be effective, required a development agreement to be approved by the city council. DNM Compassion Center is an existing retail dispensary on Olympic Drive, one of the three retail dispensaries that are allowed and have been operating within the city of Clearlake for a period of time. So back on February twenty-eighth, the Commercial Cannabis Ad Hoc Committee that was established by the council considered a request to allow micro businesses within the city and made recommendations to the Planning Commission that they allow those micro businesses to operate. So the Planning Commission considered some municipal code amendments allowing those micro businesses on April second. And then those amendments were considered by the City Council and ultimately adopted on May ninth of twenty nineteen. So as part of those code amendments, micro businesses were limited to three total permits. And those three permits for micro businesses could only be obtained by the three existing retail dispensaries within the city. And then one further limitation was that the micro business not be allowed to cultivate mature plants, but nursery stock only. So. DNM Compassion Center is the only one of those three businesses that have applied for the permit thus far. And their use permit was approved by the Planning Commission on October first. So just a brief background, so what's, you know, what's before you is not approval of the use permit, but just the development agreement that ultimately activates that use permit. So the permit would allow manufacturing at the location, but in this case is defined by the state law as packaging, labeling, extraction, and infusion. Based on fire department regulations. And when we think of manufacturing cannabis, we think more of the extraction and infusion processes. But according to state law, packaging and labeling are also in that category. And that's what DNM Compassion Center is considering doing at this time. So the key intent of this permit is to allow essentially vertical integration of cannabis licenses on a smaller scale. This isn't permitting really expansion, or no expansion of the footprint of the existing facility, but additionally allows them to conduct similar activities at that location as one licensee rather than having to have separate licenses. So I know the council is familiar with this because you did adopt the ordinances a few months ago. I wanted to just give a little bit of background. So with that presentation, I would try to address any questions you have specifically about the development agreement. The applicants here as well, if you have questions about the project in general.
Jones, would you like to speak to? To your application? You don't have to, but if you'd like to, this is your opportunity.
So yeah, this has been a process, it's taken about two years for us trying to work out all the wrinkles. We've had great support from Alan Ann, from Bruno, spearheading this when he was mayor. I do appreciate all the time and consideration of the City Council and the Ad Hoc Committee and the Planning Department involved in doing it, including the fire department as well. We try to offer whatever hoop or whatever expectations anyone has had of us. And up to this point, I think we've appeased or jumped through the hoop, if you will. So again, I appreciate your guys' consideration for the developer agreement. And if there are any questions, I'll try to answer them to the best of my ability.
Do you have any questions? Councilman Harris? Councilman Overton? Okay, I think we're good there. We'll open this up to, to public comment. Is there any public comment when you guys decide? Okay, now seeing that, I'll bring it back to council. Any comments from either of you?
I was trying to find where, there's supposed to be a reservation in the ordinance in here.
I'm just going to read it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to hold first reading ordinance number two thirty-four dash two oh one nine, but I thought it would only waive further reading and set second reading and adoption for December twelfth, two thousand and nineteen.
Motion has been made by Councilman Harris.
I have no title to read.
The title of the ordinance would be Development Agreement with Jason Jones and DNM Compassion Center LLC for a Cannabis Micro Business.
The Development Agreement with Jason Jones and DNM Compassion Center LLC for Cannabis Micro Business.
All right, a motion has been made by Councilman Harris and seconded by Councilman Overton. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. So, move on to the next hoop. All righty. Onto item, is this item thirteen? And this is considering.
We need to bring in Mr. Stewart.
Yes. I guess he, I guess he did a part in this, huh? All right. Now, item thirteen, consideration of appointment to the Planning Commission for an uninspired term ending March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. We have three applicants. I see all of you sitting out there in the audience. Do we have an order? If it's not, I do have an order. It's paper up here. Okay, our first applicant. Oh, yes, our first applicant will be. We'll take them all out and then bring the first one in, yes. Mr. Coolby, you'll go outside also. Mr. Three Manager, will you name the three applicants now, or?
Sure.
Three applicants, Vaughn Williams, Erin McCarrick, and David Coolby. Vaughn Williams will be the first, the first person we have. Each of us has a question for the applicant. And they will get an opportunity to tell them, tell us about their qualifications and and then that applicant will go out and the next one will come in. So it's Vaughn Williams, Erin McCarrick, and David Coolby in that order. So could, ma'am, or could you bring Mrs. Williams in, please? Hello, Mrs. Williams. How would you state your name and where you live, and then we'll get in my first question for you.
My name is Vaughn Williams, and I live in the City of Clearlake.
Okay. Vaughn, tell us about your qualifications and why you would be a good choice for planning commissioner. What skills, what qualities, experience, or education do you possess that would allow you to hit the ground running if you're appointed?
I'm a self-starter and a quick learner. I retain what I learn. I had fifteen years in the mortgage business, but I did a lot of anyway, processing and making decisions on loan quality. I ended up as an underwriting manager. It was my final decision whether a mortgage up to over a million dollars was approved or not, protecting the company that I worked for's finances. I've spent the last fifteen years building my own business and spending a lot of time in the nonprofit side of things here in Lake County. So the first fifteen years that we lived up here, we commuted to Santa Rosa. And the last fourteen years, we've been here in the community and doing things here in the community.
Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor Sluton, please, have a question.
If a developer proposes a project that technically meets the code, but you do not personally believe is well suited for the proposed location, what would you do?
I don't think that my personal feelings necessarily should come into it. If it meets all of the boxes of the codes and the plans for the city, I don't think that it's a political or a personal view position.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Overton?
So what is your vision for the City of Clearlake?
I would like to see the city continue to grow in the direction that it's been going. I have truly enjoyed seeing all of the changes that are happening. I know there's quite a few projects in the works right now that will help beautify our city and make it a more welcome place for tourists. I know with the wine industry, we're getting a lot more tourists up here. And I would like Clearlake to be a welcoming place for them. I would also like to see us get more small businesses that are going to bring good employment base into the city, and I think that that's very important as well.
Mrs. Williams, Councilmember Harris, what do you know about current development projects within the city?
I know Measure B with the roads is in process. I know animal control, which is near and dear to my heart, is going to be redone. Austin Park, I know tribal health is, is working on a project here on Olympic. The airport project, I know that looking for another tenant for the third space up at Big Five and Tractor Supply. And I believe that the codes are going to be redone. So those are the projects that I'm aware of that are in the works right now.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Mrs. Williams, is there anything else you believe the council should know in considering your application for planning commissioner?
I know that it requires a lot of reading, a lot of studying. I just finished a two-year term with that, it was an elected position with Founder Region Fellowship as part of Seroptimist. We gave away two hundred thousand dollars over two years, and part of that process was in one weekend. We had to read between fifty and sixty applications for women the last year of their PhD studies. And each application was twenty to thirty pages long, including a big part of their dissertation. So it was a lot of very technical, involved reading. So I enjoy reading and I love making things line up. I love doing accounting and things like that, too. So I think that my little bit of OCD, for lack of a better response there, would be a good fit for this position.
I appreciate that, your comments, Mrs. Williams, and I thank you for your time. That it?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Out there? Um, yeah, Erin McCarrick. Good evening, Erin, would you state your name and where you live?
Erin McCarrick, I live right there on Locust in Clearlake.
All right. Mrs. McCarrick, could you tell us about your qualifications and why you would be a good choice for planning commissioner? What skills, qualities, experience, or education do you possess that would allow you to hit the ground running if you were appointed?
I think the biggest skill would be to be a quick learner. Learning more and more about city government as I've lived here and experienced city and county government, I realize how much there is to learn. And so to be able to take whatever ordinances or requirements or you know, acts that I need to read and understand, I'm able to pick that up pretty quickly. So being a quick learner is my immediate skill to bring to the table. And secondly, going through some of the ordinance programs or ordinances here and understanding what it takes to get through the building department or get through planning department and city hall. I have a deep understanding of the importance to have codes and ordinances and to keep them consistent and to objectively work with them on the planning commission as an advisor to the, to the City Council.
Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor Sluton?
If a developer proposes a project that technically meets the code, but you do not personally believe it's well suited for the proposed location, what would you do?
I think it's important to be objective as a planning commissioner. You're looking at, does it fit? As you said, it fits. And then seeing what the impacts are to the surrounding neighborhoods and if there's, has been the public comment period? Has there been any public comment? Has there been that, you know, ten days of posting? And looking to see if there might be any other one individual that could get advice from who has maybe gone through something like this before or looked to precedent to say, has a development that met the code, but is it, is it publicly controversial? Is it? This is. Are there other council members that feel, or planning commissioner members that feel, that might have experience with this? And then, again, as I said, picking up on the ground running, understanding what restrictions, that all being said, with not quite understanding all the restrictions that may be inherent to being on the planning commission. So understanding that I'm operating within the rules and regs, that it means, you know, the city's definition of what is acceptable for the city, but then also understanding what a planning commissioner's roles and responsibilities are, not stepping outside those, being objective within those restraints. My personal, I think, listening to the city and maybe being, you know, maybe being sure that the city is aware and the residents are aware of what is going up and how they can give feedback on it, and business leaders, everybody in the community.
Okay. Councilmember Overton?
Thank you for applying yet. So I'd like to know, so what is your vision that you see the City of Clearlake? You know, what do you see?
I think that the, creating a community for families, like a family-based community, regardless if you have a family or not, I'm a single person, but I love the idea of all the events that happen in the city, Halloween, the Fourth of July, you know, just seeing an active, vibrant, safe community. I walk my dog every day around Austin Park. And I walk my dog every day around Austin Park. And having the more enhanced police department, this is just me personally, not the planning department, just me personally, what I think of the city. It just feels good and I hope that the kids have, have felt more of that kind of like safe place to have. In terms of the city itself growing, making its own little island within Lake County. You know, it doesn't need to be, it doesn't need to compare itself to the other elements of Lake County. It just needs to be the shining star of one of these, which is a home community. People want to come home here. They want to be here and they want to have shopping to come to. They want, they don't want to go to Lakeport to have things to do. I know this has been, you know, on the board before in terms of attracting things, but I think it's, it's on the right path of enhancing the community events that make people feel safe and comfortable here. And whether it's, you know, within the rules and regs and objectivity of the planning commission, supporting stuff, sporting items that do create a place for people to live.
Okay. Councilmember Harris? Ms. McCarry, what do you know about current development projects within the city?
I know the ones that make the news are up at the city council, trying to attract folks to the airport property, the development of Austin Park, the potential resort population in the end, the, the end of Austin Park, I can't think where we know. Some of the renovations of some of the mobile homes down Old 53. And, well, personally, it's not like a major commercial development, but I love the cleaning up of, like Chief White introduced in terms of like the vacancy, it's not an ordinance, is it? Should know that. But the vacancy, the applicant, ensuring that people keep their properties up to code and if they don't, that they're fine for it. I think that's fabulous and people have been starting to talk about that. And, you know, not to jump on the bandwagon, but yeah, the airport property would be nice to have something there. And, yeah, so I know the ones that have made the talk at council and, you know, in the paper or the news. And I also really support Alan's vision of making this, like, not having necessarily jump on the tourism bandwagon, which is making this like a, a place to be. So. Ecosystem. There we go. That's our, our ecosystem.
Okay. Ms. McCarry, is there anything else you believe the council should know in considering your application for planning commission?
I did talk to a couple of the planning commissioners, like throughout since I applied last time, and wanted to understand what they do and tried to keep up as much on the, I haven't been able to attend to many of the meetings, but trying to keep up on the posted agendas and minutes. And just trying to understand what the role is for the planning commission. And I will continue to understand what that role is and fulfill those roles if I am appointed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, could you state your name and where you live?
David Goldsby. I live here in Clearlake, out on Route 8 of Main.
Okay. David, tell us about your qualifications and why you would be a good choice for planning commissioner. What skills, qualities, experience, or education do you possess that would allow you to hit the ground running or if you were appointed?
Well, my background is in architecture, design, build. I've been, you know, designer, builder, contractor for 35 years. So I've had lots of experience in submitting plans to, to the building departments and having to, to meet the requirements of zoning. I'm also very interested in, in the kind of foundational resources, like water, air, soil, food, those are all issues that I've worked on. Septic systems, some unusual ones that I have done in the past.
Vice Mayor Sluton?
If a developer proposes a project that technically meets the code, but you do not personally believe is well suited for the proposed location, what would you do?
I would ask them to, to consider altering their plan and try to, to accommodate some, a different point of view.
Okay. Councilmember, Councilmember Overton?
What is your vision, your personal vision for the city of Clearlake?
Well, I would like to see us become resilient to, for climate change particularly and to, and to be better prepared for some of the emergency situations that we, we found ourselves in here. And, you know, particularly interested, like I said, in, in water and making sure that we have those systems in place. You know, I spent, I spent all day today going to, to see a microgrid system in Sonoma. Particularly given the kind of inconsistency that we're really looking at when PG&E can't provide us with consistent power. I'd like to, to at least be looking at how we can make our community more, more resilient to being able to provide our own power.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Harris?
Mr. Goldsby, what do you know about current development projects within the city?
Current development project?
Yeah, things that are currently underway.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure which, what you're referring to, except...
Just any development projects that would work in planning, for example.
I don't know of any that I'm particularly following.
Thank you so much.
Okay. One final question will be, is there anything else you believe the council should know in considering your application for planning?
Well, I know that, that you, for example, had, you know, you, you trashed those, those lines at the senior center to be able to put the irrigation system in and, and, and so I was involved in installing all of the irrigation systems there and creating, doing the solar system for, they controlled that, that irrigation system. Worked very closely with Linda Burton, getting that all installed.
All righty. I appreciate your comments and if you could step back out, we're gonna do our deliberation and...
This chair is holy, thank you.
They do this for purpose to be that everyone, short one, even though I'm the shortest person here. Anyway, at this point, we all have our reading sheets. It takes a couple of minutes to complete those, if you will. Are we gonna have public comment? I don't know, is this, okay. We will have a public comment. Is, are there any comments from the public with regard to any of these applicants? Could you state your name, although I know it, where you're from?
Mayor Neighbors. Chris Jennings, I'm Clearlake, business owner in Clearlake. I believe Clearlake has a solid future and the ability to progressively move forward. However, in order to move forward, we need to be able to think outside the box. We can't say no to what we don't know. We need to say why so we can better stand and make it clear, not by a decision on the matter. When we have a group of elected officials who are planning the council, their job is direct and steer the future of the city for the best of the city. I think it's important to elect officials who can see a situation of any type and make an official decision based on what it actually is and how it makes sense and fits within the city or without the city. We will never succeed in moving forward if we elect and or not make those who make decisions solely based on their own personal beliefs. With that said, it is time to move forward and bring on those to these positions who can see outside the box. I believe having someone like Erin brings that to the table. Want to re, want to repeat, we cannot make decisions based on being uneducated or solely on our own personal beliefs. It's okay as a person to not agree with someone based on their personal beliefs, but it's still agree with it because it fits within the city's parameter. So, need to keep that in mind.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other public comments on any of the applicants? Ms. Almond?
Sure, I'm in the city of Clearlake. I also had, would recommend Erin as well. I think she's checking or looking at what needs to be done. I think she has the processes down. She's been through many of them, has even been working through them on her own. Also, she has energy and I think that she is looking at how to look at us better and different. And the fact that she's checking or thinking, not simple answers, but most things are complex and I believe they are. So having known her for a couple of years, I would recommend her as well.
Thank you, Ms. Almond. Are there any other, other comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to do our final ranking, which we'll present to Adam Clerk for tabulation and, and come up with the final. Well, I think we ought to do the ranking, do the ranking first or not? Doesn't matter to me, it's, it's up to you. Okay, let's do the ranking first and we'll bring them back in.
Bring them back in, I'll say.
Do that over you want.
We've got a movement toward the city clerk. Let's see if the council votes.
Unfortunately, I need to ask you guys to write names on these because we don't have secrets.
Oh, sorry. This is mine. Uh-oh.
No, this one's not mine either.
We have to go to him. Good thing we go a little longer together.
That's not mine at all either.
This is not mine. None of those are mine.
Why not name it tiny?
Look at the top rest where she looks. This is, this is mine. Didn't have chaos ensued. Did you find mine yet? Okay, which one is yours? If you shy around, yeah, I can tell you which one's mine. That's not mine. Yeah, mine actually, mine has built and like teeny little signature on it. Is this? It's mine. It's mine.
This is someone that you have.
That's right, I have a black pen, sorry. Literally, he likes my choices. Okay, yeah. Sorry.
This is not our finest moment.
So I will read off the votes. Councilmember Overton chooses Erin McCarry. Councilmem, excuse me. Councilmember Harris chooses Erin McCarry. Vice Mayor Sluton chooses Erin McCarry. And Mayor Kramer chooses Fon Williams. So it would be appropriate at this time to have the applicants come back in.
All right, do you want to read the final?
Yes, and then the council would by motion and second, then vote, by voice vote for the...
To accept the high?
To accept the Erin McCarry as the next primary candidate.
Have some to come back in?
I drank almost the entire pitcher on myself.
You want to...
Water, is that?
Want to recess after this?
Probably a big mistake. Come to think of it, I need some more water.
Okay.
Would you like me to announce it?
Pardon me?
By majority vote of the camp, or by majority of the council, they have chosen Erin McCarry as the planning commissioner, which would be then ratified by motion and vote.
Yeah, I shall now entertain a motion.
I move that we appoint Erin McCarry as the planning commissioner for the term ending March 2023.
I second that.
A motion has been made by Vice Mayor Sluton and seconded by Councilmember Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Congratulations. And thank everybody for applying. Thank you very much.
Yes, this is, I forgive you. Thank you again, all of you, for stepping up. It's a tough thing to get up in front of a panel in a room and work offhand. I think you all have qualities that, that this city needs and only, there could only be one person that was a winner and appointed person. And I do congratulate you, Erin. Fon and David, thank you again for your service and, I shouldn't touch that. Thank you very much for your application and your continued community service for this city. All righty. Moving on then? Okay, we're up to item 15. Consideration of Appointment to the Zoning Code Ad Hoc Committee. We have, uh, one, uh, I guess it was one applicant, but, uh, at this time, the recommended, recommended action, well, go ahead, Mr. City Manager or Adam Clerk. I'm never sure which one to get the code.
All right, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, when Planning Commissioner Lisa Wilson was appointed to the Planning Commission, her seat on the zoning code update ad hoc committee as a public member became vacant. Staff advertised and accepted, accepted applications with a November 7th deadline. We received one timely application for the vacant seat, Mr. Chuck Leonard. It is appropriate for the council at this time to consider the application and, um, appoint Mr. Leonard by motion and majority vote of the council.
Prior to that, well, Mr. Leonard, do you have any comments or the council? Okay. You're not getting up, just give before the, okay. Any public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to council.
I'd like to make the motion that we, uh, accept Chuck Leonard as the member for, of the committee.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Overton and seconded by Vice Mayor Slaton. All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. Okay, um, moving on to item 15. Consideration of Appointment to the Traffic Safety Committee. Adam Clerk?
At the October 10th council meeting, the council adopted changes to the Traffic Safety Committee. The committee now consists of one council member and one alternate, the city engineer, the public works director or his or her designee, a representative from the police department, as well as a representative from the Lake County Fire Protection District, and one public member. Staff advertised for applications for the public member with a November 7th deadline. Unfortunately, we did not receive any applications for that public member seat. So, it is appropriate at this time for Mayor Kramer to appoint a member and alternate of the council and have that ratified by motion and majority vote. Additionally, we're asking direction by the council on how to proceed with the public member vacancy. We can continue advertising for the vacancy or you can ask for nominations from the floor and two qualified applicants would simply need to reside within the city. So, that's all I have. If you have any questions.
Okay, so the first thing that we will do is, I'll make my appointment of council members. And then, again, so we can open it up.
You can open it up and, um, so if you open it up to the, um, public now and someone from the public would like to be appointed to the Traffic Safety Committee, they could do so and they would just, um, come in and fill out an application on Monday. They can still be appointed tonight, but the application process would still need to be finished just to verify that they reside within the city.
I'm opening up to the public. Is there anyone out there that would, uh, would like to serve on the Traffic Safety Committee? This is an important committee. Traffic safety in our city is becoming more and more of a concern. So, I would, uh, I would ask any of you, if you're interested at all, to let me know now or think about it, uh, later on. Supervisor Sebastian?
No, I do not wish to be on the committee, but I just want to give an idea that I think that has merit is, you have a lot of VIPs who understand and see a lot of the traffic issues and deal with traffic and maybe having their input on this committee might really be, uh, a good way to get them involved in, in changing the city for being a safer place.
Too bad that, uh, they're not still here to hear that. Okay, there's no one, no one in our current audience that is, uh, is interested in that, so perhaps that might be something, Chief White, if you could, uh... See if there is others of your, of your VIPs. All right, well, we're gonna move on to, uh, my appointments, uh, two council members. I've talked with, uh, with, with two and it's, at this time, I'd like to appoint Russ Perdok, who's not here to say no, to, uh, to the committee and, uh, Vice Mayor Slaton to be the alternate on the committee and, and he has already, uh, they have all, they've actually both already, uh, agreed that they would like to serve on the committee. So, that would be my recommendation for the appointment. I'd like to get that ratified. Mike Subler? Motion been made. And second, a motion has been made by Councilmember Overton and seconded by Councilmember Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
So then, the next thing is the public. We want to advertise again.
So, we need to put that application.
We can continue advertising for that vacancy, yes.
And then we'll bring, what, we'll bring that back to ratify at the next meeting or...
Yes, you, uh, if, when we receive an application, we can bring that back to council for, um, adoption and I would recommend that the Traffic Safety Committee meet, um, in the absence of a public member. Go ahead and start meeting.
All right, well, Councilmember Perdok will be back next week. So, I probably if you get, and I think you should attend that also even though you're an alternate, stay current on that, if you, whenever you can. Of course, you're not here next week, all right? You'll be back in two weeks, six. Well, perhaps we'll, we'll try to shoot for that then. All right, item 16. Consideration of Appointment to an Ad Hoc Committee related to the Public Safety Power Shut-Off Events. Adam Clerk? Would you?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, at the October 31st joint meeting of the council, the Lakeport City Council and the County Board of Supervisors to discuss the impact of the PSPS, uh, there was a consensus to form an ad hoc committee of two representatives from each jurisdiction along with staff report to further discuss how to move forward with advocating for the residents of Lake County, Lakeport and Clearlake through the CPUC. So, it is appropriate for Mayor Kramer to appoint two council members to the ad hoc committee with ratification of the council by motion and voice vote.
Okay, it's been my first, are there any comments from the public? It has been my, after given a thought, I have, uh, asked Councilmember Overton if she would serve and I will also serve as the other, uh, other member on the ad hoc committee. So, I would ask for ratification of that.
I move that we appoint Mayor Kramer and Councilwoman Overton to the ad hoc committee, uh, for the PSPS, uh, in conjunction with the City of Lakeport and the County Board of Supervision.
Second?
Uh, excuse me, we should probably take public comment on this item before.
Yeah.
I like your ideas.
So, we'll back up and take any public comments, if there are any. All right, seeing none, can we have to do that again or? Okay. A motion has been made by Vice Mayor Slaton and seconded by Councilmember Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion tasks. All right, last item. I'm gonna go to Mr. City Manager to open this discussion and state whatever you wanted to do.
Okay, if you could just, um, maybe read the agenda.
Okay. The discussion is related to public and private streets within the city of Clearlake and available options for maintenance.
So, um, our consulting city engineer is gonna provide the background report and, um, we'll take, uh, questions from there.
Uh, yeah, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Since the city's been incorporated in 1980, the bulk of the development that happened in the city happened prior to your incorporation. It was done by subdivision map act and over the years, um, and even prior to, um, to that, the county ma, the county had an inventory of streets that they maintained and they subsequently turned over a list of streets that they maintained in the city back in 1980. And, um, so, we were tasked with, um, uh, looking at that list and, um, uh, going, going through the subdivision map, going through the various subdivision maps and various information to, um, you know, verify the list and, and try to create a nexus that was reliable for the, for the city streets, especially given the impacts of Measure B. We worked with the county surveyor, uh, on, on the creation of that list and verification of what's been provided and, um, we came up with, um, we came up with, um, you know, kind of the three scenarios that there are, obviously there are streets that are offered, that were offered for dedication via the subdivision map act process. There were streets that were offered but rejected and then those streets would remain private and then there are streets that were offered for public use and, um, but they still remained private. So, um, you know, the, the, um, that's kind of the background of what I was asked to look at and provided to the city manager, the city attorney and just get an accurate, uh, depiction of, of what's public, what's private and what's been maintained historically since the 1947 map and then, and then carried forward to the 1980 listing of public versus private streets. That's what I provided.
Okay, and so, um, thank you for that. So, almost all of the, um, streets within the city have been analyzed. There's, there's still a few anomalies out there that continue to, to look at, but you see at the end of the staff report, there's kind of a couple of main areas that we're wanting, um, some direction from the council on how to move forward. So, the first one poses the question, if the city had maintained a street that is determined to be a private road, should maintenance continue? So, it's something that we anticipated could be an issue, but at this time, we're not aware, um, of any streets that, um, this is the situation. So, if we were to identify some moving forward, uh, we would bring that to the council kind of on a case-by-case basis, um, for determination further. So, really what we want to talk about tonight, um, is if a property owner on a private street comes forward and would like the city, uh, to provide future maintenance, take that in as a public road. First of all, is the council interested in doing that? If so, um, what conditions, if any, do you want to place on that process? And then, uh, if not, you know, kind of how do you want to handle that? So, that's, that's sort of why we're here, um, and, you know, uh, we can take specific questions on kind of what some of those options are. I think our, uh, deputy city attorney is, is prepared as well to, to talk about the legal implications because depending on the three scenarios that our, uh, city attorney identified, there's a little different process if the streets were offered for dedication and rejected or if they were never, uh, offered to begin with. So, those kind of need to be looked at on an individual basis, but, um, you know, I'm sure the council's aware that there are folks out in the community that are aware that they live on a private street and are potentially interested in, um, that situation changing. So, um, as a council, are you open to that? So, how do you want to handle the process? Now, I did want to point out, I have, uh, Councilmember Perdok wasn't able to make it tonight because he had a, a scheduling conflict, but I did sit down and meet with him. Um, there was a couple of points that he wanted to make sure that, um, I shared on his behalf with you, so, um, I can do that now or wait till another time that he feels appropriate.
Why don't you do it when you think it's appropriate for, either do it now or do it when you think it's appropriate within...
Okay, maybe, maybe if you want to hear from the public at this time, um, that type of thing, and then when the council's deliberating, I can, you know, share his, his thoughts.
First, are there any questions, uh, for the city manager or engineer? Okay, given that, I'd open this to public comment. Welcome, state your name.
Chuck Leonard, City of Clearlake. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we have standards where for the city to accept a street, it has to be dedicated, it has to be brought up to standards that have already designated in the ordinance. Uh, and then, once it meets those standards, then the city can take it over. That's the way it's been done before. To change that now and make it where people can just have the city do the street doesn't seem fair to the people that paid in the past to do it. So, I think we need to continue with that, it seems to me, and, uh, make sure that if they dedicate the street, it's brought up to the standards that it needs to be, then the city can maintain it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Ms. Almond? State your name.
Yeah, Fort C. Jordan, I was worried. I've been looking at this issue for a number of years and so I do know that most of the subdivision maps, especially in the 20s and, um, well before the city incorporated, that all of the, um, city streets were pretty much private except where they were county, um, designated. And so, when you say, um, city maintenance, we've been maintaining many of those streets for a very long time. A lot of people use those streets, so they're not limited to, uh, a small segment. So, I'm unclear, when you talk about dedicated and undedicated streets, what does that mean? And then also, a list of streets for prior, um, private, I know that there are a number, we used to have a white binder under the counter that defined some of those streets, but in researching it from the county, there was no designation as to how those streets had egress and so forth for the residents living on those streets. So, um, and I checked with the county, that had not been completed. So, I've worked on, I've lived on two private streets in my life and in those, it's very clear how that gets designated, who has ingress, egress, that kind of thing. So, again, is the legal process going to, um, process those that have been identified and, um, so that everybody is clear, um, what their obligation and what their rights are? So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. State, you want to state your name and...
My name's Judy Thiem and I'm here to, I'm representing the residents of the Lakeland subdivision and I'd like to talk to you about the roads within our subdivision. And I'm probably one of the very few left that's available that can give you any history with the roads and the conditions of the subdivision. So, with that, uh, as you know, this, uh, Lincoln, Lakeland subdivision, uh, was built in the early 90s and it was the decision of the then city council and developer that residents would maintain the roads and that a homeowners association would be formed. Well, the homeowners association was formed, but it was formed in paper only. There was never anything about the roads and all it was, was the rules of CC, CC and Rs., uh, but you can and you can't do the regulations, so there was never no mention of the roads or any dues to be collected, so consequently, none of that happened. So, the original property owners did not create a homeowner association fee. So, the original property owners did not create a homeowner association fee because they felt that the streets, it was for residential use only. It was a small subdivision and they could take care of it. Well, time marched on and changes happened. Years later, the senior community center was built. While the Grove was built and the county waste treatment pump station developed and needed more care and more traffic developed with the growing population. No one from the regional council at that time thought of the future of Lakeland. As the future was non-existent at that time, as Lakeland was created for the pleasure of the residents it served. They did not forecast the impact of the future burdens that would be placed on Lakeland. They had no way of knowing that a senior community center would be built or the changing times. In 2010, our streets were falling apart and they were cracking and getting more and more damaged. And some of this was due to the impacts that were occurring in the subdivision. And the city had no money, it was a recession. There was no homeowners association dues, so there was no pot of money to draw from. So, we went door-to-door and each resident paid their fair share to take care of our roads. We paid to seal the cracks that had the roads oiled, and the city installed stop signs and painted the lines for the stop signs. Now, fast forward to today, nearly 30 years later from the origin of Lakeland. The dynamics of the city has changed, more growth, larger population, more traffic, more everything. And what was for Lakeland is no longer. The current impacts to our two streets, which are Bartram Circle and Gardner Lane, impacted the senior center. Senior Center has events quite often. People drive up and down our roads to get to the senior center. The overflow parking is always a problem. And a perfect example is this, this past summer, there was a free veterinary clinic day. Well, cars were parked all down Bartram Circle and Gardner Lane. You could be leaving it out of your driveway. We had cars, we had trucks, we had motorhomes, we had travel trailers, we had motorcycles. We even had boats with trailers parked there. And years ago, once a year, the senior center gave out flu shots. And the impact, again, the cars on our roads, because there was no place else to park. It was just an overflow. And currently, the senior center has a food bank truck, a semi truck, and it doesn't always do this, but we've even noticed one of their trucks coming down our roads. And because of the construction projects throughout the years at the senior center, we've had water trucks, we've had dump trucks, we've had construction trucks, cement truck, heavy equipment. And even a company that did work for the senior center was using our roads, going up and down the roads. The county waste treatment pump station in the winter is always a concern for the water. And we have water trucks, we have Rota-Rooter, we have county trucks going up and down our roads constantly. And we even have the street sweeper, even though it doesn't sweep our streets, it uses our road as a shortcut to get back to the main road. All of these examples have resulted in the use of our two streets. Our subdivision isn't like any other subdivision. It's not like the harbor, it's not like the village where the traffic in there is just belongs to the residents and the service trucks. Ours, we get every type of vehicle you can think of, as we are open on both ends. Cut through, some think it's a shortcut. The city has classified Lakeland as private streets. And the definition of private is not open or controlled by the public, and that's not the case with Lakeland. Our two streets are a cut-through, open on both streets. We have continual impact of the senior center, which is government business. We have the impact of the county sewer pump station, which is government business. We have the impact of our two streets now, they serve our open to all the public, which belongs to the government usage of the streets, government business. We're only talking about two streets here, we're not talking about miles and miles of roads. Bartram Circle and Gardner Lane, maybe it's about a quarter of a mile combined. There are seven houses on one side of Bartram Circle and five houses on Gardner Lane for a total length of 12 houses. That's not a lot of area. I've been with the city, as most of you know, I've 30 years, 22 of them as an employee and eight of them on the council. And through many administrations, I was taught that once any repair work was done on the roads, the city must accept those roads. And I've given you a little write-up. This was our one-time city administrator, Dale Nyman. And this was from 2007, when there was discussion on the subdivision with Phase 2. And in that discussion, it was brought up about our roads. Who was responsible, was it the city or was it the subdivision? And Mr. Nyman said, and this is a summary of the lake pack news when they wrote it back in 2007. And Mr. Nyman, in a telephone interview this week, said in research the situation and found out that in 1992, the council had said it wasn't accepting responsibility for the sub-streets. However, although he's not sure when it happened, the city began repairing the streets since that time. And he's quoted as saying, it's pretty clear to me that the city's accepted the responsibility for the streets. The city has also put in stop signs, they painted lines for our stop signs. And at one time, they had a volunteer, you may have known of, his name was Tommy LaLotte. And he was a city volunteer under the direction of Doug Carrion for Public Works. And Tommy helped maintain our streets, he did whatever repairs were necessary. He even cleared out storm drains, whatever he needed, he would repaint the lines for the stop signs, all as a volunteer for the city. So, please, when you're thinking about all this, please keep in mind that no one from Lakeland created this situation. It was created for us with no choice. The residents feel down, that it's time for the city to step up to the plate, accept responsibility for all that's happened, bring our streets up to standard, and accept them under the city maintenance plan. We feel that we should no longer have this shelter, the burden of government business or anything else. And also, just a little side note, we met with our city manager on Tuesday, and he suggested that we come here to you and begin the process with you.
Thank you, Ms. Littler. Yes, Councilman Overton has a question for you, Judy.
Do you, before you sit down, ask you a question? Judy. So, when you bought your property, what was your understanding of the street maintenance at that point, at that time? Was it on you guys when you bought the property, or was it supposed to be the city?
Okay, I was told by the neighbors when we bought our property, the original ones, that it was up to us to maintain it.
Okay, that's not, I just don't know where I started at. Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
That you were told that, or was it in your preliminary title? Was it in your preliminary title report when you read it, when you bought the property? Was there any mention of the street maintenance in the title report?
No, we were handed a copy of the CCNRs, but there's nothing in the CCNRs about street maintenance at all. So, the only way anybody found out was word of mouth. And if you were to purchase any property there today, you're not even given a copy of the CCNRs. You have nothing. Nobody, anybody that's purchasing, they're so surprised when they find out that the city does not maintain this, it's a complete surprise.
Vice Mayor Sluton has a question?
A quick question too, just to have. My understanding that the map that created the subdivision has specific language on dedication of the streets. Could you tell me what those are, please?
Well, so the streets were offered to the public by the developer. And at the time, the city, it's a little bit of a unique language in this case, but they accepted some aspects of it, but they specifically rejected, it says, "for maintenance of rights of way for public use," Item A, which is the roads, and the drainage easements, until such time as accepted by a resolution of the city council.
So, that probably should have been in the title report that I made. So, in my opinion, you probably have the most nice, best-looking streets in the city.
I probably what?
Probably have the best-looking streets in the city.
Right, they need work out.
Excuse me?
Our streets, we need work out.
And that's why we want to begin the process with you, so you can realize what we're going, because nobody would know this unless you were told. And this is what happens to us, we watch this day after day. The neighbors are tired of this whole thing.
If it's a private street, you can close it off, right? If it's a private street, can you close it off?
It's a private, it's not closed off? Is that what you said?
Can't you close it off?
Well, what we were told years ago, and I brought this up to the city manager, and he said it's not true. If we closed it off, then we wouldn't have any public services. The police would not do anything or anything, so people, so he said, oh, we want our public services. We want to be safe. But if you could close it off and we could still be safe, that's great too.
I just want to clarify, what Judy is saying was not me as a city manager telling you that, it was a previous city manager.
Oh, yeah, it was, it was, Jim.
I understand the situation, and I think there's probably some way to get it.
Mr. Bush, do you have any comments on this?
Mr. Mayor, if there's a specific question, I believe that what's on the agenda for tonight is a discussion as to whether the city is interested in entertaining private proposals to take over streets. Those streets can fall into a number of different categories. And if the city council is interested in entertaining that, I believe what needs to happen would be direction be given back to staff to create a process for that, where there's a lot of legal factors involved, including what is the city's past practice been. The city's not, you know, required to take possession of some of those properties. And certainly, it would be one of the factors in terms of an example such as this, as to whether all the residents would agree to dedicate the properties to the city. And so, I think at this point, it's going to be fact-dependent on what streets we're talking about. And so, at first glance, if the city council is indicating that there is, would be, the city would be interested or amenable to considering those, then staff would need to designate a process to bring back to the city as to what staff is supposed to be looking at, and make a recommendation on each of those fact-case-by-case examples.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Ms. Littler? Thank you, Ms. Littler. Are there any other public comments? State your name.
My name's Kathy, and I live on Gardner Lane. And Judy's pretty much covered it, I don't want to bore you with more on the same thing. I did bring the petition that the neighbors, there's only two neighbors that we were not able to contact. They just rented a home. But there's the signatures of all the homes on Gardner and Bartram that want the city to maintain from. So, I purchased my home on Gardner Lane two years ago. I was not told during the process through either the title company, through a realtor, nothing that those streets were not maintained by the city. I had a neighbor give me a copy of the CCNRs, and I read through them. There's nothing in there that, basically, the CCNRs were an agreement for the original owners and the subdivision group that got together about, they wanted to have a clean area in Clear Lake to live in. They wanted to be able to have, we have guidelines, we can't have our garbage cans outside of our backyard, out in front of the gates where people can see them. We're not allowed to have extra cars parked on the streets in our front yards, like some of the other neighborhoods. We have guidelines because we want to have a nice neighborhood. That's why those homes, people buy there, they wait for those homes to come up for sale. I know I did. And so, what I want to add to what Judy besides the petition, showing you guys the signatures, I'm sure the other two people will sign, maybe that you guys need that. But what I'd like to add is that I understand the process that the city attorney has said, the legal process. I understand what the city engineer has read. However, my, this is my personal take, I haven't talked to any of the homeowners, but just from what I've heard tonight, this is my personal take on this, is that we're talking over 30 years since the origination of that. From what I heard from the city attorney was there's different guidelines, different things that people might want to accept, not accept. From what I heard from the city engineer, some of these things were written. There was always a possibility that the city council or the city itself would take over, possible. We're talking about the Measure B, or B, I can't remember what it's called. And the thing that I would like all of you to think about in the process of doing this is those of us who have bought in recent years, we were never told. We didn't have any idea about any of this. We're right in the hub of the city, we're next to the city, we're next to the senior center there. And as we were here one time about maybe two months ago, you remember maybe seeing Judy and I here? We were here because we were talking about, we want to maintain the quality of where we live. Part of the quality of where we live is street maintenance, let's face it. We have sidewalks there, we have gutters, we have a city what most cities look like. So, I think in the process of this, if you could take into consideration that there's different people there, there's different circumstances. Years ago, when that was built, there was not the traffic that we have now, not the big, I mean, truck after truck comes through there. I live in Garner, Garner and Bartram. They don't stop at the stop sign. So, like my little neighbors that are, got a couple of little kids, that's a real safety hazard in my books, because kids come first for me. They don't even stop. We have a vacuum truck that comes twice a day. I don't know if it's the county or the city that they work for, but they come to a water, I admit, that is across the street, almost from my house, twice a day. The weight from that water truck has to be exorbitant, has to be, because it's huge. So, if we could all get together somehow, even if there was a community meeting with our brave people here, if this is something that you would like us to do, we're not asking for more than just the repair and maintenance of the streets. That's all we're asking, to keep our city clean, to keep it an area that people want to come to. Make it an example of what Clear Lake is eventually going to be. I mean, we're making huge changes in Clear Lake. Let's make the whole city someplace somebody wants to live, not just our little two streets. And I think part of the process of making that happen is helping us out. It's not cheap to do that, and those of us, most of us, had no clue, had no clue. We thought you guys maintained it. So, if you could please take that into consideration in your process. And if there's any questions you want to ask, I just don't want to go back. I don't want you guys to have to sit and listen to me say the same thing as Judy said.
Are there any questions? Thank you very much for your comments, we all appreciate you.
Okay, thank you for taking into consideration.
Advisor Sabatier?
Bruno Sabatier, city of Clear Lake. So, there's definitely different types of roads. For instance, the road I live on should never be anything other than a private road. To ask the city To ask the city to take care of a road where there's three houses and it's almost a quarter mile in length would be ridiculous. But there's some other roads that I don't understand how they are still private. One of them, I believe, is either Emerson or Washington that goes past the bank, Cecil's Pizza and the Theater. That's a place of commercial business. It's a private road, and we're asking people to go and frequent those areas so that those businesses can be successful. That makes no sense to me how that can be a private road. So I would ask that that be one of the priorities to be looked at. We're inviting the public to come onto that road. There's other roads and the avenues where it's public, then for a block or two it's private, and then it goes back to public. Those that go straight through, people aren't turning off because it's a private road. They don't even know the difference. Those would be something to look at. But I agree with Mr. Leonard. Right now, if we fix a private road, it would be providing public funds, gifting public funds to private individuals. And so, to just take a private road automatically without asking them to bring it up to a specific standard would really be asking for us suddenly tomorrow to fix roads that today would be illegal for us to provide some funding for. And so for them to bring it up to a specific standard would do two things. One, at least when we take in the roads, depending on what the process is, it would allow us to not put money right into it right away. But also, when it comes to Measure V, they wouldn't all of a sudden blend in with the other roads that we'd made promises that we would fix. That was part of the promise during Measure V. And so, I think that there's processes to be done, but I believe that this is the right direction to go, to look at specific types of situations on a road that makes no sense for why they are private. Maybe it made sense fifty years ago, eighty years ago, when all of this was subdivisions and all planned out, but it doesn't make sense today with the way that our city has grown. So I think that each individual one will need to be uniquely looked at and identified as to what the process is and how it's going to handle. But I think this is the right direction to go, and I appreciate the fact that you're having this conversation today.
Thank you, Mr. Sabatier. Williams? Please state your name and where you live.
Fon Williams, City of Clear Lake. As Clear Lake residents, we're all paying on the Measure V road tax regardless of whether we live on a private street or a public street. And the majority of people who passed Measure V probably didn't realize that there were so many public streets and private streets. Yet, we are paying to have only public streets redone. So if you live on a private street, it will never benefit you. And that's something to maybe think about in making the decisions about what streets are made and taken over by the city.
Thank you.
Just from being a person from, I've been here for forty years in the same house.
State, state your name.
Oh, Joan Moore, Clear Lake, California. In nineteen eighty, when we voted this to be a city, never in our wildest dreams did we think we were going to have private roads. I mean, I live on Hillcrest or Fry Avenue that goes from Fortieth to Forty, whatever, you know. And when we voted this to be a city, I don't remember ever reading anywhere in that, when we voted for that, to become a city or so that it was supposed to be so that we could have the road money that the county had, and we're fixing our roads. And it's like, vote us in to be a city, and then we can take the money from the county, and we can fix our roads. We don't have to depend on the county anymore. That's why we voted to be a city of Clear Lake. Never in my wildest dreams did I, did any of us realize that in the small print, it said, oh, except the side streets. I mean, you go up, what, Austin, and then all the side streets are private? You go up Hillcrest and all, Liddell and Fry and Lansing, they're all private? I never dreamed in the world, when I voted this to become a city, that I was going to all of a sudden live on a private road. I mean, I just assumed you live in a city, and you have main streets, and then you have roads that go off the main street, and then that's your city. Now, all of a sudden, I live on a private street, and it's my responsibility, how the heck would I ever afford, to fix my road? I mean, I got a thing, a hole as big as this thing right here that you can't get to in the winter. And I'm not, there's no way I could afford to fix it in any way, shape, or form. I mean, I just don't understand any of this. It seems to me like we should incorporate our town into our town, rather than just have like Austin, Hillcrest, Fry, just big roads, and that's all that the city has, and everything else is private. It doesn't make any sense to me. A city is a city. Your roads are all incorporated into your city. And when I voted for this to become a city in nineteen eighty, I just really assumed, who knew that they'd split it up like that in the small print? I'd really love to look back at the old voting, you know, that when we voted for that, to see what it really said. Because when I read it, to vote for it to become a city, never did I see that, well, you know, most of the roads would be private, but, you know, take care of something if we get that money from the county. So I just want you to remember that this has been going on since we voted this to become a city. So we, to me, we are now, we're paying taxes on that and everything, and it's still the same thing. When I voted for the tax, and I'm proud, I'll vote for that tax. Yes, we should take our own roads. But all of a sudden, I'm not included because I'm on a private road. It's like, sheesh, it's always been part of the city, but, so anyway, I just want you to know that people have been here for a long time and lived through all this. I don't consider myself living on a private street. I think I live in the city of Clear Lake. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore. Are there any other public comment? Seeing done, I'm bringing back, this, we're looking for direction only, is that correct? So why don't we just, Councilman Harris, do you want to go first?
Sure. So, you know, I, in a general sense, I feel that the responsibility of our city is to find a way to try to incorporate as many of these roadways that make the most sense into our city structure. But there is something to be said for the fact that some of these areas didn't have any, any factor gain, dollar figures for the structure of the roadway to begin with. I mean, we know that there's quite a few roads throughout our city that there was, during the development of those areas, there was never any money factored into the development of the roadway, the drainage, curbs, gutter sidewalks, all the different aspects of infrastructure that is what makes a road, you know. So for the city and the taxpayers of the city to just automatically assume what would have been a developer cost at the time, and go back and try to bring those up to a standard, it's quite expensive to do that. But on the other hand, when we look at, when we look at a situation like you have brought to us, that roadway does meet all the criteria of formidable roadway. It did have all of the different aspects of infrastructure built into the roadway. And in my opinion, bringing us a petition with ninety percent of the population of those roadways signing stating that they want to give us the roadway leans towards the idea of what we're here today to talk about. And that's the process in which we're going to allow for that to take place. I think yours is a prime and shining example of the beginning of this thing and how we start going about it. And I'm in favor, in favor of, in your case-by-case scenario, in your case that you brought to us, I'm in favor of having your roads incorporated into the city structure as a public road. And as Bruno mentioned, there are others that make clear sense to incorporate as well. And that may be something we need to really have a discussion about, not necessarily that those, some of those don't even have a lot of residences on them, it's businesses that are on those roadways. So, what would be our criteria? Does that roadway have all the necessary components of a standardized roadway where we're not going to be fitting the bill for an enormous infrastructural development, where those developer costs should have been occurred during the development process? But in your case, it was. The curbs, gutter sidewalks, drainage, everything was in place, and now it's just a matter of maintaining it. I believe in a general sense, it behooves the city to make sure that all the roadways to the best of our ability are maintained, and promotes a positive image of our community. And I think that this would be a good example, this one, to start with, to find the process, the legal process, and go ahead and move forward with it on that one, and then start taking a look at a lot of these others and seeing what we can do.
Thank you very much.
You know, I think what we're trying to do tonight is give direction to our staff. Councilmember Overton?
Okay, so I have some questions, some legal questions. One, we have roads such as Mrs. Moore has stated that are really, are not able to be drove down. I, as most of you guys know, I run the senior center, and my drivers are unable to get down some of the roads, which tells me that our emergency vehicles cannot get down these roads either. I happened to have taken care of a client on the particular road that Mrs. Moore was talking about, that at one time, they actually had to carry them out on the gurney because it was too bad for them to drive the emergency vehicles down. What is our responsibility on that part? Because some of these roads are absolutely that bad. So if, I mean, it is our job as a city, that's what our services are, provide services for everybody that lives in the city, whether they live on a private road or not, which I've never, I agree, I don't understand this, how this even happened. But there has to be some kind of responsibility to us to make sure, there's no way these people on these dirt roads, the stuff, are going to ever bring them up to be able to be accepted as far as into the city is. They're not going to build the road, and then we're going to kind of turn around and accept them. That's just insane to even think that that's going to happen. It's never going to happen. People don't have millions of dollars to go fix these roads. So, we have to figure out a way to help fix these roads where they're drivable, if they're dirt roads or whatever, they have to be able to have emergency vehicles go down them. I don't care if they're private, I don't care if they're public, I don't care. I want an emergency vehicle, whether it's a fire truck, an ambulance, you know, they have to be able to get down there, down these roads. So we have to figure out a way, whether it's an agreement that we will semi-maintain them, grade them once every whatever, so many years, without being responsible for the road itself. But somehow, we have to be able to provide our services to these people that live on these roads. So I don't know what that's going to be. I'm just going out there that we have to figure out something.
Mr. Mayor Sloane?
On the question, the second item, if property owners on a private street would like the city to provide future maintenance, based on that question, if the, I think the city should only accept those that are built to an appropriate standard, period. But there are a lot of different ways to deal with it. If there's a group of people in a certain area, they can create an assessment district where the city possibly could front the money, and then gets paid off through bond issues or whatever. That's, or through property taxes. That's a way to do it, and it's gets done all over the state. But there's, there are ladies, there are two ladies over there, it looks like it's somewhat of a specific and unusual case. First of all, the map that created the streets and the language that are used is, I've never seen in my life, and I've done subdivisions, thousands of them, so it's very unusual. But I think in your case, it's, the streets are improved, the system management, the city should be able to maintain it. However, a caution, I believe that you probably would need all the people sign off on it.
That wouldn't be a problem.
But it's, yes, but there are legal issues, and you probably need to check what the city attorney and what really needs to be done on that. So those are the two, two conditions, I would say. Build it to appropriate standards. I can see that maybe in the avenues, a little bit different than off Lake Shore, there should be some standard so that city, the city can maintain it in an appropriate way. Because the city is unable to go pave the avenues, because we just don't have the money for it. This is my point.
Okay, thank you, really. I think our task here was to give direction to our staff on whether we should, what we should proceed with, trying to develop a process for determining what we're going to do on our city streets. I think clearly, we all want you to go ahead and come up with a process. And obviously, there is a huge variance in, in the condition of the streets from, from the best streets in Clear Lake, in the Lakeland subdivision perhaps, to the dirt roads that are not passable, as Mrs. Moore is stating. Even with the passage of Measure V, there's, the funds are, I wish we had funds to do every street. We don't. What we're trying to do is a process of determining the streets that we, that are ones that we can deal with right now, and move on to those that are a lesser extent. I agree with Mr. Leonard. I think that in general, the street should be brought up to a standard. That standard is going to be different depending on what the street is. If the street is a dirt road or a gravel road, and it's always been that, then perhaps that's a standard in that area in a similar rural part of the city. In the case of Lakeland subdivision and streets like that, then that standard is one that's paved as sidewalks, OES, curbs, and gutters. So, I think, I think what I'm hearing from the rest of council is that we would like for staff to go ahead and come up with recommendations on a process for determining how, how to deal with, with the streets, as you say, on item two, a private street that would like to provide future maintenance. So what conditions would we place on that process? Come up with some alternatives for us, or recommendations, and then I think come back for a later, later meeting with those. Is that, is that the direction you're looking for?
Well, if that's the direction, if that's the direction of the council, yes. I mean, I've heard some consistency, but I wouldn't say it's been a hundred percent.
Where would you like clarification?
So, let's start at the beginning. So, there's the option of being reactive to requests from property owners or neighborhoods about bringing their streets in, and there's been some discussion about city actually identifying specific areas to pursue and bring in. So I think that is the first question I would have, is if there is any interest in us being proactive and looking at certain situations, or we're only responding to requests from property owners.
Proactive. I agree. I think we need to get to commercial parts, like what Supervisor Sabatier stated about, like, oh, we're asking people to come and do business, but yet they can't get down the road. So I think those are roads that we definitely need to look at to start bringing up, and facilitating to go out, they're private, I think they should, you know, can't have commercial when private, and then expect our, ask our people to go do business there, so.
So proactive?
I think proactive, definitely.
Mr. Mayor Sloane?
I don't think there's a whole lot of streets that are private and if commercial at this point. I can think of maybe a private street or something like that. I think it has to come from the residents themselves. Because if, if they want to have their road contained by the city, it has to be brought up to some standards. And the city can facilitate all that process, but I don't know if they, we should be proactive and go, no, probably want this street to be private and create, whether it's an assessment district or the, I guess maybe an assessment district for certain areas to be put together. But again, that requires the vote of the people to put it together, so I think at the end, it has to come from the residents.
I think the answer is it depends. Again, I'm actually being serious here. There are some streets that, that they need to be brought up to a standard before, I think, before we're, the city is to go in and, and accept the maintenance. There are other streets that, that are already at that standard, and we definitely should be considering them to take in, into public maintenance. Councilman Harris?
If I'm to clarify on my proactive, if we have one street that we feel like we should look at bringing into the fold, that's proactive, even if it's just one street. But what I'm saying is that we need to identify, if there's things that are affecting the economic development or the
the economic development or the, the overall growth or sustainability of our city, and we're not actively identifying something that's holding us back and trying to take action on it, that's what I mean by proactive, I just want to clarify.
Appreciate that. So it's specific to...
So is there consensus from the council about being proactive, limited to commercial or key development areas that may have private roads?
Yes, I'll go along.
Yeah, I'll go with that.
And so, and I, and I failed to get back to this, but Councilman Pardok, the two things that were particularly important to him were before the city accepts any roads at the request of property owners, that should be brought to the city standard. And that if there's unique and complicated situations with an easement or something related to that street, that it should be the responsibility of the homeowners, the property owners in that area for any title work or other verification of status rather than the city's doing that. So everyone's in agreement that it needs to be brought to a city standard? We will have to look on a case-by-case basis, perhaps, on exactly what that standard is.
Well, that's not to say everybody's in agreement, because I'm not.
Well, that's, I'm asking the question.
No, I'm not in agreement with that, because I don't believe that's a feasible thing for us to think that anybody is going to be able to take those roads in this economic, low-income area and bring them up to the standards that we see. It's, it's not feasible. If it was feasible, I'd say great, but it's just not feasible.
They did it in the park.
So, so, I mean, it's not feasible.
They did it in the park.
No, they did it in the park.
The street's paved out there, if you go out there and lift page three. Okay. Not going to have a shouting match here. Standards don't necessarily mean sidewalks and curbs and gutters. A standard would be standard to that particular neighborhood, in my opinion.
I agree with it. I don't think you can put Lake Shore all the way to the county line, curb, gutter and sidewalk, you know, that doesn't make sense to me. Even though it's considered probably a...
Can I clarify now? So if it's a dirt road, now has no curb gutters or sidewalks, basically they need to make sure it's graded nicely before we're going to accept it, because it's already a dirt road? And that's the way they got it, so is that the way they need to bring it back up?
With, with drainage that is workable for that area, that part of the roadway. I think drainage is probably one of the biggest problems, is it not, Mr. Schwartz? Some of the areas are dirt roads.
Yeah, I think that, like, if it's a standard of the area, a lot of the dirt road areas, if they were going to grade it, they would just have to account for a grate or drainage and maybe some culvert crossings, like the other streets have in those areas. So it will probably be a little more complex than just going out there with a grate and grade it off. Probably have to put some, some roadside swales and some culvert pipe in, but that would be my interpretation.
So I, I guess what I, what I want to say about that particular issue is I would love, absolutely love to see all of the streets in the city paved immediately. I mean, that's, that would be fantastic. But the fact of the matter is, Measure V is a wonderful thing that we were able to accomplish, and it does have the 20-year sunset clause. And if we were to take all the money that Measure V is going to bring in in 20 years and extrapolate that out to 100, maybe in 40 year, 160 years, we might have the money it would take to do what we would need to do to bring all those roads up to code. So with that, or up to a standard that we're talking about with curbs, gutters, sidewalks, that whole business, so there's truly, it's completely economically impossible for us to do that. But what is possible and what can we do? And what can we do to influence all the lives of the citizens that live in our community and do the best we can with the money we do have? And that's what it comes down to. And I think we're already on that road, and I think incorporating some of these would make sense to me. The other thing that I would like to see happen is that we'd like to see a template put together so that people that live in a certain district or area could very easily find the resources they need to accomplish an assessment district if they wanted to do so on their own. So I think it wouldn't be that difficult of a task for us to put together sort of a predetermined package for them. And if they say, hey, we really, we on this little stretch of road are so committed to the idea of improving our property value, we want to take our dirt road and turn it into a paved road, and we want to do the whole works, and then we may have some structure or template involved in that to allow them to do such a thing. And I, I think that's a realistic program. And I, and I think that, that unfortunately, those homes that were built on that street, when they were built on that street, that should have been incorporated right into the cost of the home and the cost of the projects and everything, we know that now. But now, 20, 30, 40 years later, their home that still sits on that property, still adjacent to that roadway, they still have an obligation to put in what's necessary to develop that section of road. It was never paved for, that section of road was never paved for. So something has to be done to accomplish that, and it's just economically impossible for the city to do this. Even if Measure V was a five cent sales tax measure, it's just, I mean, it's economically infeasible to think that we can go around and pave all these, all these roads, so.
Thank you.
Well, I think just to, to give a little perspective on the situation with a couple of numbers. So currently, the city has 110 miles of publicly maintained roads, some of which are paved and some of which are unpaved. I don't recall the exact number, but I think the private road mileage is around 40 miles. So our, our existing pavement management plan, the funding that we have with Measure V and other sources anticipates bringing our pavement condition index from a 40, where it exists today on a scale of 100, up to a scale of 85 within 10 years, which is, which is fantastic. But that doesn't include any of the gravel roads that are in the public system or any of the private streets. So the, the point I just want to make is, along with what Councilmember Harris is saying is, you know, we have $2 million a year of Measure V funding to work with, and we do a lot, and we're doing a lot. It's just the more road miles that we have, the more it dilutes what we can do each year, so.
I think that, I think we all understand that. Do you need more clarification? I think we still want to see if...
Okay, I, I think we're getting there, yes. So does, does the rest of the council agree with Councilmember Harris's suggestion to put together a packet or template of information that would help accommodate property owners in setting up an assessment district for their area if they would like to?
I think that would be... Probably is one in there already. I would have the special things numbered out, number four, so there probably is somebody in the city council already.
Okay, and you know, I think, as I understand it, it would be the responsibility of the city to help manage the vote and all that sort of thing, if there was a group of folks that wanted to accomplish that. So it sounds like we're in agreement on either grading something or updating something that the city has perhaps somewhere. Maybe Vicki's the only one who knows that.
Maybe Vicki is the...
So it sounds like, in, in recap, that you would like us to put together a process and a framework to allow property owners to come forward to the city on a case-by-case basis and bring private streets up to a city standard. We're going to have to do some work on determining what that would be on a case-by-case basis. Hopefully, we can provide a little bit of frameworks for that. And we need to be proactive in looking at commercial areas or potential economic development areas. And if there's a conflict there, whether it may be served by private street, we need to look proactively at figuring out how to bring those into the public maintained road system. And the template of resources for the assessment district. Is there any other direction that the council would like to give away?
Just a comment. If you create an assessment district, it gets, you know, you get paid over, over time, but immediately, once you have the, the street installed, it will raise your property value tremendously. I mean, it's, you know, if your neighbor does it, the next street over might think about it again, might do too, so. Just a comment.
Good point. Do you need further clarification, direction? If we beat this thing to death now?
Any questions, Dean?
Okay. You have your choice. Moving right along, we're done with business actions. So we'll move on to the city manager and council member reports. Your city manager?
My report will be very brief. We will be having a special city council meeting next week on Wednesday, the 20th, at 2:00 p.m. And that's my report.
Wednesday, at 2:00 p.m.?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Harris.
Nothing of significant value to report.
Councilmember Overton.
I'll take on your turn. So, okay, we'll start off with our PSBS. I, we had about 900 people come through our center through that time, this last time. We handled it pretty well. I think PG&E crew that was on their boots, I call it the boots on the ground, they were very good and very easily dealt with. They basically only served like some snacks and coffee. So one of the suggestions was that they maybe bring food. We did serve approximately 200 meals one day on our own, and then another nonprofit came and was serving, served about 125. So we were able to provide some food, but it was, that was a suggestion that we give to PG&E that they think about food if they're going to do this again, because people don't have a place to cook. So, but all in all, you know, people were in pretty good spirits, we didn't have any trouble, so I was really kind of happy about that, so. Chamber dinner, I, well, we catered it, and it was nice to see that both chambers came together and had a nice dinner. I really, I really think that's a great idea. I've always tried to work, like this idea that both chambers work together. I think there should be one that they don't want to be, so let's, let's make them work together. I like that idea, I think it was great to have them there, and so I had a good time with that, and my good speaker, so. Did the trunk or treat was awesome, I really, really want to appreciate that. Quincy and Crystal got in and got people together to put that together for us. And we had 20 cars, which was great. We'd like to really try to work more on doing more of a festival next year, so hopefully we can keep this kind of coordinated into right here. I like the idea that we're all right here. I think it makes it a lot safer for the kids to, and maybe take some of that pressure off the homeowners of having, you know, the activities at their place, it'd be nice to be able to get it all over here. Went to the animal collection dinner, and they had a full house, had a great time. And I think they did really well on their auction items and their stuff. And then went to the flag lowering with the park study club, that was a great job done this year. I think it was way better than normal, so I was glad to see that, because we're kicking up the, kicking it up, so. Went to see Chicago, thanks, a great, great, you know, I really liked having the theater thing, so I'm really been on that theater thing, so. So I met with John and Barbara today, and I just showed them the building next door, so hopefully they'll be contacting our city manager, seeing if there's something maybe there that we can work for, towards. Most of you got the save the date thing, the senior center will be doing a New Year's Eve mystery dinner, give everybody something to do for New Year's in the middle of the week, so please look at that and look for the date coming up, or look for some advertisement coming up on that. I'm going to attend Laughco next week at Lakeport, so, I hope I'm here, but I am. You want to, so I need some paperwork from you, so maybe if you have it. Operation Gravel Gravel through our Assemblywoman Cecilia Auger Curry is going to be donating 100 turkeys to us this year. Golden State Water Company, they are so awesome to pick it up and foods, et cetera, also helps provide, bring those in. So if there is a family in need, please have them give us a call at the senior center at 994-3051, so that we can get them on the list. We only have 100 turkeys, so we're not, you know, we're not this big, huge thing, so please don't everybody just call, just make sure that it's somebody that really needs the turkeys. We're really trying to find the families that are not able to maybe get to the food banks to get their things or something like that, some special things, so please, you know, make sure that you can be picky about it. So, and outside that, I just want to say thanks to the staff for all their hard work through the Halloween stuff, they did a great job, you know, really putting that together, as always. So very proud of our city for doing that, so, thank you.
I also attended the flag lowering, and it's nice to see a bunch of kids out there, it was good. Briefly stopped in at the Halloween thing. I also did see Chicago. We don't have to get too far to see some culture. I attended Laughco meetings in Sacramento. One interesting comment was that they're really trying to get some of those special service districts be more economically stable. They're particularly looking at here in cemetery districts, water districts, et cetera, because it becomes pretty critical to be able to keep up to date and with all the testing that needs to be done for water districts. And I know, for instance, that Riviera districts had had some issues with water quality, and those are the things they're really starting to look at, safe water is very important. December, the Rotary has their annual Christmas dinner for the whole city, started on, we have pictures with Santa, there'll be a health screening and together with Councilwoman Overton, blanket giveaway, so we typically expect close to 1,000 people to attend that, so. That's, and it's a lot of fun, thanks. That's my report.
Okay. I'm trying to fill in those things you guys are missing in the kitchen.
Can I add to his report while you're doing that?
You may.
So further more, further, the winner, we have joined up with the Rotarians for, I think this is our fourth or fifth year, we've been doing it together. Actually, it's their program now, I just continue to help. But if anybody wants to donate, you know, they can also just drop them off at the thrift store there on Lake Shore Drive or Cofin, between 10:00 a.m. and 3:00, Wednesday through Saturday. Or they can give me a call, which is 350-2898, it won't be long.
Okay. Anybody else want to do over, redo? Going back to the PSBS and Operation CRC, Chief White found out yesterday that our CRC was the most, can you fill that numbers in, Chief?
I don't have the numbers, but my understanding it was the most visited CRC.
In our region, or in, ever?
I think across all the CRCs.
Across the whole state. Pretty amazing. And it was really busy, it was, went up to 1,000 people, probably went over through there.
Well, sign-ins were, almost 900 was just the people that signed in, and there was a lot, of course, that didn't sign in. The first day, I don't think anybody signed in, so.
And, and outside of what I'm particularly proud of, is that our generator operated flawlessly, while those in other areas didn't. It's, Dirk and I had a little hand in getting that put in, I think we're both pretty proud of that. The restroom, the trailer that we have, we decided to give it a try, and again, it also worked pretty well. It did work flawlessly, and they didn't have a permanent draw for the gray water. Action Sanitary gave us some help with that. At any rate, we found out that, that everything worked very well, and it really happened in that. During the PSBS, and the fact that we had a generator and refrigeration, we were able to take advantage and help out the Connect Identified School District, who didn't have generators in place, and had a lot of food after the second day that was getting warm, or was going to, was in danger of getting warm. So we were the beneficiary, you know, that the senior center was, and I think some of those meals were, went... I think some of those deals went to CRC and the championships and some went to seniors. But we took the perishables from six schools. Six KSD schools that went through the senior center and we were able to benefit from that and save food from being wasted. Last weekend I went to the Adventist Health Clear Lake Gala. They don't want to raise money. They raised over $200,000, which I think this year is going to their Lib Will program. Going to talk to them soon or maybe we can get a little of that for some of our needs, but at any rate, I can give that a try. Went to area planning council meeting with Mr. Leonard yesterday. Thing of note for us, I guess, is the status of Highway 53 corridor study is getting ever closer to happening. The Highway 29 project seems to be hitting some speed bumps. Would you agree that, with that, Mr. Leonard? 29 expressway project, sounds like they're already backing up on some portions of that.
Yeah, it's just a working rivalry, yeah. This is a difficult one to have.
The turnabout at Highway 20 and 53 is essentially complete. I think they have some decorative things left to do on that, but it is in operation.
Can I make a quick one? Is it now one for?
It's up in my report.
Yeah, just a minute. It's now not the Y anymore, it's the O?
I guess it's the O. As far as announcements going forward, since we're making announcements, Lorale Schoolhouse Museum is doing their tree lighting on December 6th, in which Santa will be there. And then you did announce with our Rotary's Christmas dinner, which is on the 14th. And when's the Christmas parade again?
Seven.
September 7th.
Seven, so yeah, so the tree lighting's on 6th. Our Christmas parade out here is the 7th. And, oh, one other thing, I write these little notes I don't forget. Again, with regard as a result of the PSPS and a lot of folks losing their food items, have their refrigerators, foods, et cetera. And Rotary and Clear Lake got together and have provided 100 food gift certificates for folks that could show that they had lost food and show they're real need. Councilmember Overton along with Gilad Adolard kind of ran that program for us to make sure that those coupons went to the right people. And I thank them both for that. That's all I can say. Oh, sure.
So one of the things I really want to stress and I want to thank, we have an awesome chief. Because during our PSPS, he was so sweet to think of us and giving a media com to put, you know, generators on their stuff. And I really want to thank you. That made a big difference in the abilities for us to help people. That was essential for us because the first time, luckily that was only a few days, but it really was stressful to everybody. So I really want to thank you for doing that. That was just, and I also want to thank our mayor because he came down and spent many hours during that time and leaving with all the evacuations and everything I have that has not happened for us. That we had a mayor that actually came down and did as much as what he did and I want to thank you for doing that. It made a big difference in when the people think of our city. So thank you for doing that and being there for us and for putting those. I know that you guys really got together and put those certificates or those gift cards together for people to get. And they did go to some very needy families and we appreciate that.
That was a clever effort. Yeah, as long as we're giving Chief White some accolades, he also turned our council chambers into a movie theater one night, which was fantastic. We had what, 40 or 50 kids here?
I think over 80. Well, maybe, I think it was 85. Yeah, 85.
So good for him for that and many thanks. And that is all I have. So we shall get your agenda items, agenda items, your city manager?
No, I don't have anything. This is really the opportunity for council members to give us direction on future agenda.
One quick, quick one. We talked about getting roads approved, so how is the status, what's the status from the development fee product?
So we actually had a review with our consultant this week, Mr. Schwartz and myself and Mr. Price, trying to get an update and make sure that that's refined, so. I don't know, we didn't talk about a final timeline, but it is making some slow progress.
Anything, anyone else? All right. Meeting is adjourned at 8:30 on 6th.